Comfort of his own dislike.
Thank you. Being seven o'clock, I call a meeting to order this evening with a salute to the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag.
Of the United States.
And to the Republic, where we're just standing.
One nation.
Under God, indivisible. What do you think?
And justice for all. Our first item on the agenda this evening to administer the oath of office to the newly elected officials. Pass the councillors to stay where you are but stand. I will stand off to the side. If you raise your right hands, please. Do you solemnly swear and affirm that you will be true and faithful unto the state? And support the laws and constitution thereof? And the Constitution of the United States? As well as truly execute the office to which you were elected? For the ensuing term or till another be engaged in your place? Or you are legally discharged therefrom? Do you solemnly swear?
I do.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
And I want you to. Your certificate?
Thank you, Carol.
You have your certificate. That is yours. That is yours.
Them in a row?
Yeah.
They're all spread out. Moment. Well, various places. Probably couldn't find out.
Okay, the first item of business now for the new informed council. Will be for them to offer a motion for selecting a council president amongst you. Do we have any motions?
I'll make that motion. I'd like to make a motion to name Patrick McHugh, the town council president.
I'll second it.
All in favor of Patrick McHugh serving as the town council president for the ensuing years?
Aye.
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 Unanimous. Thank you very much. Turn it over now to then Patrick McHugh, the new council president.
Thank you. I just want to first welcome Victoria Talbot to the council. I look forward to working with her in the coming years. I'd like to thank Paul Gollumbesky. I don't think he's here tonight. When I first got on the council, I get to sit next to Paul. And we came quite friendly and talked about our business and mostly about family. And sometimes we had some good humor with Gary. So I'll miss him and I wish him luck. I'd like to thank Gary for his help and support in the past four weeks of this transition. I appreciate all your help, Gary. And lastly, I want to thank Bob Mushin for being so accommodating and gracious the past four weeks. Showing his class and dignity that dignity that we all know he has. So I respect that. I look forward to working with you, Bob. And Bob's given, you know, the most precious thing you can give is his time. And he's done that for 20 years in this building. So that's really something to be proud of and I'm glad to call you my. All right, do I have a motion to conclude the minutes?
I moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any announcements? Seeing any? Thank you. Department head reports? Anyone like to take one out? If not, do I have a motion?
I think I had something, the town administrator I'd like to discuss. I'll make the motion to prove them all with the exception of the town administrator.
I'll second that motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So. I heard from one of the senior citizens today that the senior van is in town and they went to Market Basket today and from what I understand, they love the new van, so I'm very glad that we finally got that in there. Another comment that I had is I think all you know, I'm trying to get 32 comments, which is the old Oddfellows Hall. Straightened out from all the fire deficiencies that it had. And I asked Ted Bonnington, our new DPW director, if you could help me with that. And he certainly has been doing a wonderful job of that. He's probably about three quarters of the deficiencies corrected with he and the maintenance department. So I'd like to thank the maintenance department, our new DPW director. Thank you.
Good job. That's a good job. Thanks. The old business one, letter from finance director requesting the council reverse the decision made regarding handling cash in the tax collector's office and allow the collection of cash? Payments from taxpayers. She's established a policy and procedure for handling it, which is in our packet. I will ask the solicitor, since I've already asked you, what you think of that and the procedures.
It's a good idea. However, I do have some suggestions. I think other some other parts of the policy that should be instituted. And one of them that there should be time limits as to when the cash should be deposited in the bank. That's the first thing. The second is that there should be a custody chain procedure to deliver cash to the bank from the town for deposits from town hall. And there should be a written record of the verifications that are set forth in the policy. I have two other suggestions as a predicate. The first is that this cash payment policy, once it's amended, should be reviewed and approved by the town's auditor. The standard practice. That would avoid any negative comments in the management letter when the audit comes out in the springtime. That's the number one. Number two, I also recommend that this be reviewed by the Rhode Island Interlocal Risk Management Trust, the towns insurer for coverage purposes. That's prudent. So with those suggestions, I think it's a good idea. I did take a review of other communities. Some do accept cash payments. Some don't. But what I could glean was what we have here on this, just to kind of bolster the procedure.
Any other discussion?
Yeah, so I don't know whether it would be under policy and procedures, but I believe there is a pretty good fee that the finance director charges for credit cards payments. Is that correct? Is there?
It's part of the credit card company. They have.
I know they have user fees, but when I try to pay by credit card, they said, well, it's going to be 3% or whatever.
That's the credit card.
Right, so they're just transferring it. Either they're getting charged, they're transferring it to the consumer.
Well, it doesn't come to us at all. That's part of the program. And it's 2% plus $1.
Okay. All right, I don't know whether that should be in there because I think if people pay by credit card, they're not expecting that charge.
It's posted.
Posted, okay. All right.
Can you come back with something for us on this?
I can, yes. The long as the motion allows me to contact the town's auditor on this issue as well as the interlocal trust.
Mushin to have the solicitor go over this and come back with a recommendation and also contact the order to see if it fits in with what they want. And the interlocal trust.
I'll second it. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Old business two, Oddfellows Hall, which is 32 Grange. We have a repair update and two stairs replacement proposals. Administrator, would you like to talk about this?
Certainly, Mr. President. As far as the deficiency, we've dealt with two at this time. Right, you can correct me. Am I incorrect when we had two deficiencies left? Yeah, of the list that I was given for the items that need to be done in 30 days, I anticipated the last two. I'll come back down and watch and go over everything. Well, they have, like I said, my list, the K with a, you know, 30 days. It'll be done tomorrow. Thank you. One, the other one is if you consider the request that the council had requested that I come up or bring a plan of the stairs to resolve that now. However, it's basically just no view at this time and part of the stuff.
Appreciate that. And Ted, thank you for your work on that. Thank you, guys.
So Tony, what else do we need to do? I see the drawings we have from Melissa Hutchinson on the stairs. So what else are you, we're going to need to do to put this out to an RFP?
At this point, I think you need to consider about the stairs. We definitely need the rear steps and the front step. At this point, is questionable how you want to proceed with that. If you want outside steps, inside steps, however we wish to proceed with that, I'm not quite sure with the, you know, the planning of the plan you could proceed.
Well, I mean, she came up with some drawings. I would have looked like she's got two different sets of drawings for the back stairs.
That is correct. One is where the cover can be done.
I mean, I think the back stairs are probably going to be used mainly for any kind of emergency access. So I don't think that has to be covered and I'd like the fire chief to look at these two to see, get his thoughts before we make something and he says that's not going to be up to snuff. And as far as the front stairs, they're pretty much just the way they are now. It's just there's an architect's drawing of them, so.
Coffee's there if anybody wants to see them. They're up there.
Tony, am I correct that on page X21, that's actually where you say it shows an option with a cover? That's the existing condition, correct?
Yes, it's true.
Okay, so it's the, it's the page one that has the new proposed rear.
That is correct, without a cover.
Correct. Yep, okay, thank you.
So I think A21 would probably be a better set because it has the break basically in the middle of the stairs and X21 has the break closer to the bottom of the stairs. So I think we should probably go with A21 and then A20, which is the front stairs. Is there agreement to that?
So, so I think the X2 is the existing, so I don't think she's proposing that we maintain that. I think the top page is showing the new stair that she's proposing that's designed to code requirements.
Okay.
The X21 is the existing stair that's not to code and needs to be replaced. Yeah, for that reason.
So I would make a motion that we try to go forward with A2.1 and A2.0. And with the solicitor's help, put an RFP together to get these out. So that would be the A2.1 and A2.0. So we can get moving along on those stairs. So we can have access to the Oddfellows Hall, seeing that the BW and the DPSW director have done such a good, good job correcting those deficiencies and I would like Randy to look at these drawings for his input to make sure that they're drawn to code. And also the building officials.
I'll second your motion.
Can I have a point of discussion on that? Yeah. So on the, my only thing that I wanted to note and just see what you guys thought about this, was the stairs in the front that are shown on A2.0. One hand side shows the existing, which is detail four, and then detail five is the proposed stairs. And I just wonder if we might want to maybe press pause on the front stairs until we're, we've done a little bit more exploration to the future use of the building. I know the rear stairs, I know egress is non-negotiable, but it is, you know, imaginable that we might want to have the front egress as an internal set of stairs as opposed to those two, I think, kind of awkward exterior stairs. That's my opinion. And I'm just generally in favor of trying to have a big picture. Go ahead and start doing work and spending money. So that's a thought for discussion.
So there's an elevator on the inside that is, that I've gone up and down and Ted's supposed to be working on that, get that, there's a switch control there that needs to be replaced. And that's on the, if you're facing the front of the building, that's on the right side. On the left side is the bathroom just on the inside, so I suppose a set of stairs could be put in the front, but I was trying to bring the building back to what it's historically looked like. Okay, instead of just have a flat front on it. You know, a big building with a flat front on it. I was trying to bring it back to the way people that have lived in town all their lives are used to seeing.
My, my understanding is those stairs were put on after. I don't know how long ago.
Well, they've been there as long as I can remember.
But you've convinced me. I will retract my second.
If I might comment, there is a set of stairs that once existed where there now is a shower. The question is, what difficulty would there be in restoring those stairs by taking out the shower? And perhaps it is a rather simple matter to put in another flight that comes down to finish the stairs. I don't know that for a fact, but it was pointed out to me by people that know the building a bit better. So it would be in keeping with the idea that we would have an exterior stairway in the back, interior stairway in the front. And to the point about the building, I believe the appearance of the building would be improved by taking the stairs off the front of the building, which to me look as if they were added at some point in the past. It would allow all of the buildings on the commons that face toward the Pike's Peak area to have the same type of facade without a, without a stairway on the front. If that is in fact the faster, cheaper, easier, all those methods, way of doing business? I have no issue with that, but at least we should explore the possibility of an interior stairway, is my opinion.
So as everybody knows, I was for temporary use for a senior gathering area. I was hoping that we could use the top floor. So when they have the after-school club and whatever else they have on the bottom floor, the senior's going to walk through all those kids and everything to get up to the second floor? Is that what the proposal is?
I don't have.
Because, because there is functions downstairs. It's just not an open building. And so if there's function going downstairs, you're going to have the secret or other people that may want to use upstairs? Interrupting whatever's going down downstairs. That's why I thought I have no problem with getting rid of the right side of stairs because it's going to a door that doesn't open. But when I spoke to some people, they said, well, it's historically been like that. It should stay like that. Okay? And the reason why I wanted outside stairs is so it wouldn't affect whatever was taking place downstairs. And that is the after-school club.
After-school.
Right, but isn't there something going on?
LC makers meet.
Right, LC makers, the after-school club, right, so. Whoever's going to use the top floor is going to have to go through those, whoever's using the bottom floor to get up to the top floor. So that was my concern about that.
I'm just suggesting we don't do anything about it right now and do a little bit more digging and research to get a plan.
Okay, I'll make the motion to let Victoria Talbot come back with a better plan.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yes, there was a second.
Is there a second? No, I'm not going to second that. Thank you. New business, appoint an individual.
What are we going to do with that? There's no motion. What are we going to do with it?
Motion, I retracted my second. You have a motion?
Right.
Retracted my second.
So what I'm trying to do here is the senior's been looking for a gathering area since September of 2023. We said we would try to find them an area. We discussed the buildings down there and here we are, a year and two or three months later. Nothing for the seniors. So we're going to wait another, what, six months or eight months? To decide what we're going to do and they're still going to be wanting someplace to visit. You're going to, if you want to put inside stairs in, back with a proposal. You don't think like the outside stairs, that's fine. But there's people waiting to get into the second floor of that building. And that's why I'm pushing it. And this isn't something that we're hurrying about. This is something we talked about fixing this building back in July. Okay, to get it utilized for these people. So that's all I'm saying. So it seems like we keep kicking that can down the road.
All right, so let's get the can up. So your, your motion.
I motion.
Second. So that, that motion failed.
Right.
Would you like to make another motion?
Well, it seems like Victoria wants to do some research on it and get something else. As I said, my concern is, is other people using the bottom floor of that thing, so they're going to have to, whoever wants to use top floor, have to upset whatever's going on down below when they come and go. And I just think, you know, a better ingress for that building and if there is an emergency that the, the front stairs are a better escape route to get out from the back stairs, so.
Question, we charge the administrator to get some plans for a interior stairwell? Would that be in a form of a motion, Gary? Something that would?
Well, no, it wouldn't because that's going to put us back another two months. So trying to get something done now, man.
Perhaps a compromise would be that Victoria and I would work on the development of the possibility of an interior stairwell with the idea that we return to the first meeting in January, which is one month from now, in which we would say it's feasible or not, and that would then form the RFP that we send out. Otherwise, we can continue to develop the RFP with that exception that we not specify specifically that we're building exterior stairs until we prove whether we can have an interior stairwell.
So that's fine. But I think you need to talk to the people that are using the bottom floor and see how they feel about people coming through whatever, whatever activity they're doing at the time to get upstairs.
Clearly, that would be, that would be part, it's my sense that one could come in the front door and immediately turn left and go up the stairs. But if that's not possible, then to your point, it interferes with the first.
I agree with you, Gary, that we should be talking to everybody that uses the building, upstairs and downstairs. Because we have people who are currently using upstairs from time to time. We have several different groups that use the downstairs. The building has 20 deficiencies, 15 of which are being remedied in the short run, five of which have been identified for a six-month plan period. And I'm not suggesting we drag it out six months. I'm just saying, let's do a little more due diligence on it before we move head and spend money on something until we're certain of how we want to use it.
Other makings of a motion, Bob?
That, that is, that is my motion, that Victoria and I leave the first to develop the feasibility of an interior stairwell and return no later than the first meeting of January to report that fact to the council.
Before there's a second, can I make a suggestion to graft onto that, to graft onto that motion? That in addition to what you're doing there, send out the RFP and have the RFP expand to, for proposals on that. Because what might happen is, is an architect might look at it, ask to take a look at the building and come up with a proposal in conjunction with that and say, this is why it should be here or this is why it shouldn't. So that might save time too, while you're working on what you're doing.
I will amend my motion to specify what I said, plus proceed now with a, basically a three-task RFP, rear stairwell, front exterior stairwell, front interior stairwell, with a condition that we can implement one or more of the tasks of the RFP as we see fit.
I'll second the motion. Any discussion?
Yeah, I just would like to make sure that the fire chief is involved with that to make sure either or any of those procedures are going to be up to code.
Understood.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. New business one, appoint an individual to represent the village of Adamsville on the Historical Preservation Advisory Committee. Carol, do we have a letter?
I will make a motion for Betsy McKinnon.
Do I have a second?
I will second that.
All in favor?
Aye. Thank you, Betsy.
Two, appoint a member of the tax assessment board to review the ensuing term. You have a letter for that one?
A letter from the incumbent, which is Stetson W. Ed.
I'll move that Stetson Eddie be reappointed to tax board review.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Receive a resignation from Susan Cane from the school committee due to personal reasons effective November 27, 2024. One of the caresses will meet 12/6/24, certify the next candidate eligible to serve on the school committee per HRC Section 803.
I will make a motion to accept Sue Cane's resignation with regret. Ask it to the council president. Thank you for the few years of service.
I'll second it. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we're going to do some appointments, town council, for appointment of the following: Town council member liaison to recreation committee. That'll be Councilor McHugh. Town council member in charge of town hall, that'll be the town administrator. Town council member to have care of Wilbur Woods, Council Mataronis. Town council member to have care of the transfer station, town administrator. Town council members to act as a liaison to the harbor commission, Councilor Mataronis. Liaison to the planning board, Councilor Talbot. Conservation, Conservation Commission and Little Compton Agricultural Trust, Councilor McHugh. Zoning Board of Review, Councilor Talbot. Town council member of the tree committee, Councilor Talbot. Town council member of the housing trust, Andrew Moore. Town council member of the pension committee, Councilor Mushin. Town sergeant. Letters of interest.
We have one from the incumbent, which is Sidney Wardell.
Motion, point Sidney Wardell as the town sergeant.
You want to do them all at once? How you want, that one has to be.
The first set that you read before town sergeant?
Yeah.
Our council president appointment.
Okay. All right, so now we're on town sergeant. I'll second that motion. All in favor?
Aye.
Appraiser of damage, damage done by dogs. Do I have a letter of interest for that one?
Yes, you do. It's the incumbent, which is Wayne Montgomery.
Montgomery is the appraiser of damage done by dogs.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Five, request from the school department for the council to vote to approve application for engineering contaminants, small and disadvantaged communities grant with Rhode Island Infrastructure Bank and naming the Little Compton School Department as fiscal agent. I see the superintendent is here with the business manager. And would you like to briefly tell us about this? That's an inside joke, by the way.
We also have two members of the Rhode Island Infrastructure Bank with us tonight. We have Aaron Kurashy. Am I saying that correctly? Thank you. And Bill Faziole. Thank you for coming. Because they will be funding this project, so that is quite an endorsement. In your package, you should have the letter from me and also a fact sheet regarding the tranche of money from the feds and the state to support small and disadvantaged communities regarding this gene contaminants initiative. As you can see from the letter, the water system is not at all in exceedance of current PFAS levels. Are well below the 20 parts per trillion. Are at six parts per trillion. However, by 2029, the EPA is requiring all water systems to meet those new regs. Everything down. Brilliant. We are close, but we're not there. Add a treatment system to our current water system. The school department has managed the water system for decades. It services the school building, of course. We are the largest draw of all of, you know, that particular system. And we have a booster system as well. We feed the Oddfellows Hall, the old Grange, as well as the maintenance barn and the community center and town hall. Our head custodian holds the VSSD license. He will need to re-up and get a treatment system license. So this is a huge project that is impacting not only the school, but the entire town. And so as luck would have it, uh, in October, we did receive a call from the Department of Health and the Infrastructure Bank. They came on site, a team of about five professionals to, um, they were making the rounds throughout the state to all of the small water systems and, um, did give us a lot of support and introduced us to this grant that you have in front of you. There are two funding sources. One is for, uh, sort of low interest loans. But we are so small that, um, fall under the other category on the right. Now, um, and that is out and out grant funding. We have engaged a chemical engineering firm, um, Haley and Aldrich to help us with the grant writing process. Uh, we are pretty, um, well steeped in water system. Have, uh, we would end up with a complex water system once this, um, emerging contaminants project is over. And so we are definitely out of our depth, Chris Osborne Junior and I. And so Haley and Aldrich has been an incredible collaborator these past six to seven weeks. They've sent someone on site, Boston office. We've worked with three separate teams. We've worked with their consultants, their and their grant writers. And that will be part of the grant, um, funding, that sort of technical support that we're receiving from them. So it is, uh, we're doing our due diligence. We want to be the best stewards of town property, the school and the water system that serves all five buildings on the commons. Um, and so we ask you to, um, you know, for, uh, to support us and to vote for our submitting this grant and also, um, naming the school department as the fiscal agent. The town owns the water system. It has always been in the school superintendent's name. Um, my predecessors' names were also on that. And it's always been run by one of the Osbournes, Chris Senior and Chris Junior. We also have, um, some redundancy built in with licensing. We have asked the town to, um, perhaps get someone from the DPW licensed as a small system, um, you know, delivery, um, operator. And, you know, we waited and that didn't happen. So we did ask one of our other, um, janitors to study. It's very intense and also that exam. So we do have a backup license, which is very important because if something happens, Chris Osborne is away right now with his family, have a backup operator. There's no one in town who holds that license in terms of plumbers, et cetera. Are a sole source when it comes to having, um, the right credentials to. Um, would you like to add anything at all? Come on up, Bill.
Thank you. Very good job. I'm Bill Faziole with the Infrastructure Bank, my colleague Aaron. So we received about fifty million dollars in funding from the EPA for Rhode Island Water Systems, this, uh, opportunity to address the PFAS problem. As superintendent said, there's two buckets of money, one set aside for larger, uh, public water systems, which, uh, those financings tend to be a combination of low interest loans and grants. The bucket of money that is eligible for Little Compton here is a hundred percent grant, uh, specifically for low, uh, for smaller water systems. We've already worked with about four, uh, uh, schools in Rhode Island, uh, who have similar issues. I think it was, um, Charroho, Foster Gloucester, um, situat?
Right.
Yeah, and then there's one other one I can't remember right now. So this is, uh, becoming a real priority for the Department of Health to get this funding out. So, uh, uh, places like Little Compton can be ahead of the new regulatory standards that take place in a couple of years and there's no match required. Uh, this grant still has to be, you know, the application still has to be filed with the bank. Our board will have to approve it at a subsequent meeting and then a grant agreement will be forwarded to the town solicitor. Make sure the terms and conditions are agreeable, uh, to the town. But if there's any specific questions, Aaron, my colleague here has done a lot of work with the superintendent in terms of the timeline and the process with the Department of Health, but, uh, just one of the share of the town, this is, uh, all grant funded, there's no obligation to pay back the monies.
Thank you. Thank you.
Mr. President, I may just briefly, I think we forgot to tell us that he's the exact right or the infrastructure bank and not to be in the C.
Looks at porn. Thank you. It's your pleasure.
I move to approve the application for some emerging contaminants grant with the infrastructure bank and naming the school department as fiscal agent.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Hi.
Thank you. Communications, thank you for coming. Thank you, superintendent.
License.
Board of License Commission.
License.
I'm sorry, I almost skipped that one. Thank you. Board of the License Commission is a request to advertise the application for the transfer of the COSBB license now held by RL Flounders, Inc. Held by court appointed receiver DBA RL Flounders Transfer to the Stalking Horse Tavern, Inc. Premises located on ninety Pottersville. Do I have a motion for that?
Motion to approve.
Have a second?
Second.
Any discussions? All in favor?
Hi.
Thank you. Thanks for catching that. Communications. Application for a mobile food establishment license received from Jillian Borgia. I don't know how to say it, DBA. What's up, cupcake? Is this a one time event?
Planning on this weekend. I don't, she could hypothetically use the license again until it expires in the spring, but.
Okay, Carol's correct. This is for, she's going to use it for one time, but the license itself, she can, she can use it right up until the expiration date.
Okay.
So I don't have a problem with her. I'll make the motion to approve it. Anybody wants to second it?
Second.
And I just was wondering whether she was going to set up. I mean, if it's going to be a continuous situation where it was going to be set up, she didn't say.
This was requested by the gentleman Andrew Greenwood, who owns the chicken.
Oh, okay.
He's going to have an event this weekend and she will be part of it.
Oh, okay. All right. So there's motion on the table, Ben.
Do you have a second?
Yeah, Bob's second.
All in favor?
Hi.
Thank you. Uh, communications, so you vote to acknowledge correction of dates regarding the request from Little Compton Village Improvement Society, Inc. For use of veteran field on Pike's Peak for their fourth annual Siconic Plant Fair. Date should have read May second and third, twenty twenty five, for the benefit of the Brown Hell House. Do I need a motion?
Yeah. Motion to approve the new dates for May second and third, twenty twenty five.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Thank you.
Thank you. Three, opportunity to apply for Rhode Island Senate Grant for a thousand dollars on behalf of our seniors.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Hi.
Consent agenda. Has anyone like to take anything out of the consent agenda? I will. Since I have the chief of police here, is he here? There he is.
Yes, sir.
How are you?
Very well, thank you.
Good. Uh, the chief of police has, uh, sent a letter. Um, and this isn't it. I was just going to read it. I thought this was in my packet, but it's not. So could you come up? It was in here. All right, this is another. So would you mind just coming up and explaining it quickly? I'll read it here, actually. Copy of a letter to Police Chief Raines from the Rhode Island State Traffic Commission informing the town of a meeting to be held December fourth, twenty twenty four, ten AM, to hear a request for a traffic study.
So I, uh, on that note, I have not heard from the, uh, Department of Transportation as of yet. I expect a letter prior with their response. So, uh, I think using a timeline is probably, uh, will explain this best. So as we watched the construction in the common completion of the project by Lynch, um, with the installation of curbing and the new sidewalk, all done very professionally and very, very nicely. Um, it became evident that our the width of our roads, which are thin to begin with, with the curbing installation have actually become a little thinner. The ability for people to park with their right wheels up on the grass of, say, the south side of the commons or in front of town hall has now been limited, the installation of the curbing. So on a busy day, whether it be, uh, in front of the congregational church on a Sunday or, uh, senior lunches on Wednesdays and the other days that they hold them. Parallel parking on both sides of all the north and south side of the common become an issue. We, we pretty much turn the road almost into a one way road where vehicles have to stop at one end, at both ends, and try to acknowledge to each other who's going to go first. It's certainly that way on a Sunday in front of the congregational church on the south side of the common. So I spoke to the town administrator, Mr. Mushen, uh, the, the fire chief, and an idea was floated and I think this idea has been floated well before my tenure, was the thought of making the common a one way. Um, in some way, shape or form to increase the safety of the traffic flow, to increase parking, uh, and just to make it a safer area. So I have some contacts at the Department of Transportation and the, the Safety Commission. I reached out to them and they said, we'll take a look at it. Now, this is post the completion of the project. So myself, town administrator, Mr. Mushen and the fire chief met with a representative from DOT. We also met with, uh, an engineer from the state and we did a walk around of the common. Floated our idea to them, which in short phrases, if you're coming from Meeting House, uh, heading east, you would bear a right at A one pizza. That would be one way to the stop line. You could take a right on the south of commons, a left in front of Wilbur's towards Willow. That would be a one way south to north. Then you would be able to take a left in front of the town hall. That would be a one way east to west down to Pike's Peak. So you're creating that triangle to be a one way. Um, as we walked around, we talked about parking, whether it would be angle parking, parallel parking. Uh, they had pros and cons of each. Uh, we also talked about Pike's Peak itself, which we think brings kind of a unique engineering issue because of the acuteness of the angle there, that, that, uh, that turnaround area. Uh, so they said that they would simply need an email from myself or any from any one of us. I volunteered to send the email to my contact. She presented it to the Traffic Safety Commission and they have already decided, but we just don't know what their decision is, whether to even look into it. Now, moments ago, I also, uh, was told that this idea might have already been floated years ago, prior to my tenure to the Traffic Commission and obviously nothing came of it. So I'm not, I was not aware of any previous communications with them and speaking to them, I don't think they were aware of it either. But if that came up or was presented during the Traffic Commission meeting, I'm sure someone would have said, you know, we've already floated this idea before and we weren't going to do it. I'm, I'm, I'm waiting for the, the letter to come back to see if they're going to actually start a study or if they've decided not to do it.
Chief, thank you for that specific explanation.
Tried to be as detailed as possible.
That's it now. Our consent agenda, there's nothing to vote on.
Chief, what, 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 the road right out here on the north side, which way do you say that?
Going east to west.
They're going to go that way.
We're going this way and then around. A one pizza that way, Wilbur's back this way. And, you know, there's a lot of things that the engineer and the DOT representative brought up. And it just so happens, we were, we were there, I believe it was a Wednesday afternoon in October when the senior lunch was going on and, and the parking was willy nilly at best, uh, where it was creating a bit of congestion. So they got a good opportunity to see what the issues were and where they would actually want parking on what side of the roadway, which would be best for the seniors or anyone entering the community center, town hall, finance, whatever it may be. Uh, so I think they got a good look at it. Whether it's possible or not, they really didn't give us an indication. We've just completed a project that costs a lot of money. I don't know if they want to, to be honest with you, spend a lot more money to rearrange all this nice new pavement and lines that have already been put down. So I, soon as I get that letter, I will certainly report to the council.
Thank you. Thank you. I appreciate that. Thank you.
Question.
Yes, sir.
In front of, uh, Commons Village, that road would be going from.
South to north, correct. That would, that, so this is, this is not set in stone. This was just our suggestion to the Traffic Commission. They could do different things. It's, it's, it's a state road. They, we've, we've, we showed them what we thought would work. They shot back with some things that said, no, no, we, we can't do that. I don't think this will work. So this is all some, an idea that's still developing, but what we presented to them or we thought would make sense was that south to north.
Somebody coming from.
Would have to take a right and cross in front of town hall. Yeah, and then make that almost a U-turn down at Pike's Peak and head back.
Right.
Towards Wilbur's.
So you couldn't go from Willow Avenue straight through to.
You could not. No.
Doesn't sound too good to me.
Thank you, chief. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Do I have a motion to accept the consent agenda?
The move.
Second.
All in favor?
Hi.
Payment of bills?
Much paid bills as written.
Second.
All in favor?
Hi.
Let's just take a two minute break. We're going to go into executive session.
He was already sworn in. He went out of the country on a vacation, so he's already been sworn in.
Really? It helps to resolve the. I see. Okay.
Exactly. Actually, I just. Oh, wait a minute.